Call this meeting to order, clerk, call a roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Here.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Here.
Nattari.
Here.
Robel.
Here.
Strumalberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Here.
Sun sign out.
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting was published in the December 18th issue of the Star Ledger and in the December 20th issue of the Bevel Times. A copy of this notice is posted on the Bevel Town Board in a copy is on file in the municipal clerk's office.
Plagued lead.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands in the nation under God, in the best of all, for the sake of justice, law, and
We have a roll call now again, Phil?
No.
I'm sorry. I don't see any matches in your contacts.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Siri.
Thanks, Siri. I need a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Motion made in second. Before we do that, do we no longer read the resolution or recite what we're going to write? We're going to go into executive session to discuss potential litigation. Clerk, call a roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumalberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes.
At this point, I apologize, but we do have to clear the room so we can go into private session. We don't want to change it long. Just going to gavel back in the order here. We're going to move on with our agenda. We just had a resolution to come out of executive session when you voted on, so now we're at number...
Approval minutes.
My robe is new. Number five approval of minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve December 11th and January 8th. Second.
Number five approval of minutes.
Yes, second.
Page three. We have a motion made in second. Clerk, call a roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumalberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes.
Next up, we have a presentation to Fire Chief Robert Caruso. I'm retiring. Is he here?
Yes, he is.
You get the reels. You get the reel. Silver lining. That's not plastic. For those of you who don't know, our fire chief is retiring at the end of the month after a fine service here at the township. And it's my honor to commemorate that with a plaque. I wish we had more to give you for your storied career. A pony? We have a pony. There's a pony waiting outside for him, isn't there? So with that being said, I just want to say I've known the chief for a while. This isn't my first tour here in Bevel. I served on this council from 2000 to 2004. And actually, the chief reminded me of this a couple of weeks ago, as we were discussing this night in particular. When he was sworn in as chief, there was a young councilperson sitting up there on the dais, and that was me. And we have that photo, it was in the, I guess, the Bevel Times, maybe, of you being sworn in and that young councilperson smiling in the background. So 18 years later, I have the pleasure of standing here. It's not necessarily a happy occasion that he's leaving. He's somebody that has served with tremendous honor here in Bevel. I have to say that it's been great having you, chief. I am a little sad to see you go, but we've become good friends over the last two decades. You've been through a lot. I've been through a lot. We've both learned a lot, I think. And you're always going to be around. You're always going to be a favorite son here in Bevel. So without further ado, the council did pass a resolution, or actually is going to be passing a resolution this evening, so because of the chief's dedicated honor, we gave him a framed plaque. Most people don't get the framed plaques. That's only after 30 years of service.
Take it out of the...
Get the real wood.
Take it out of the...
The real wood.
Real wood. Real pressed wood.
So without further ado, resolved by the municipal council, town to Bevel, whereas Robert Caruso, chief of the Bevel Fire Department, will officially retire on February 1st, 2019, after a 38-year career of service to the residents of the township of Bevel. And whereas Bob began his firefighting career with the township in June of 1981, and as a result of diligent work and demonstrated ability, he advanced through the ranks to his final and most important position as Bevel's police chief in 1994. Fire chief. Fire chief. Whereas throughout his 38 years of service, Bob has managed Bevel firefighters under his command through serious situations, including weather-related state of emergencies such as Hurricane Floyd in September of 1999, and Hurricane Irene in August of 2011, and Superstorm Sandy on October 29th, 2012. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor, municipal council, the town to Bevel, take this opportunity to express our sincere and grateful appreciation, and hereby extend to Robert Caruso our congratulations on this well-earned retirement, and our best wishes to him for continued success, happiness, and good health. Congratulations.
I made quite a few speeches in this room, and I'll try to keep this brief. This is Mr. Take care. But I thank the mayor and council for this recognition. I'm proud of my service in this town. I think I gave it my all, and I think I was successful at it. Now that comes with an explanation. Without the support of this governing body, the most recent, and I was talking to Mario before, Mario was one of the first council people I had dealt with back in 1993 when I came in here, and we're going through some of the names. And the common denominator is, we need the support, and we need the relationships, and we need that partnership to help us do our job and to be successful for, not only for myself, but for the department and for the town. We all work for the town. We're not here for any of us. The three gentlemen here, the chiefs in the back of the room, will be moving up into the administrative offices in the coming weeks and months, and they will be carrying on what we started many years ago. It's a non-stop process, and without the support of the council, without partnerships that we have with the council, and importantly, without the dedication and the commitment of the firemen, that's what makes a successful team. That's what makes people up here come out and say, "We're proud of what we have working in the fire department and for the police department," or whatever. And it takes the combination of their support and their working with us, their understanding of the issues, and from the firemen, for their dedication to overcome whatever, the good times, the bad times. It hasn't always been great. It's been difficult, but with that combination, we make it work, and we always come out where we're doing the right thing for the community. I thank you all. I appreciate the honor. It's bittersweet leaving, but it is time for me to move on, and hopefully I'll be around, but not in this capacity anyway. So I appreciate it. Thank you, mayor. If you guys wouldn't mind doing a picture, I don't know if we have anybody that can take a picture, but I would love to have a final picture with the governing body manager.
Why don't we come on down? It's not a great...
If you can do it on the backside, I'm going to work with you and make it work. Yeah.
In the round of applause.
Get in here, too.
I'm coming in. I'm coming in. Come on, you guys. Stevie Will. We got chiefs in this room. Looking another way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next up, we have report of the manager.
Yes, thanks, mayor. I will start with what we've achieved since our last meeting. Obviously, it's an ongoing battle, but we continue to patch potholes throughout the township. We once again repatched more water dishes. We removed four trees, had six others trimmed. We had several cleanups, one in front of the stadium on Milton Street, Wayne Street Playground, Fistol Range. We had several water main breaks. The first one on the 12th of this month at 603 Mill Street, we replaced 10 feet of pipe with 12-inch pipe. On the 21st, we had another water main break on Sunset Forest. On the 22nd, on Virchwood Bell. And on the 18th, I'm sure it was over there, it snowed in the AM, we saw hills in the main streets. And then the 19th, we did likewise. We also have a revaluation impact letters going out later this week, which will notify our property owner of the new assessments, and inviting them to schedule a meeting with the representative of the company regarding any questions that they may have. Following up on what the chief had mentioned, we went through what I think was a very comprehensive process to replace the chief, all right, and some other positions. I'd just like to announce this evening that my selection, and this was out of the top three candidates, who were, I think, two and a half points separated from each other. John Oliveri will in fact become our new chief. Timmy Buckley will become a deputy chief, and Marty Lutz will also become a deputy chief. So I congratulate you all.
Thank you. Next up, we have the report of the mayor. Just a few items here to talk about. You might see, those of you who are normal visitors of our meetings or watching online, we now have an eighth person up here with us. So he's here to just give us some better advice. It's, this layout here is just not conducive. We can't see him when he's sitting down there. It's very difficult sometimes to communicate. So you will see him up here. We're trying it out. We don't know if it's going to last. We don't know. I don't know if I want him next to me for the whole, the whole meeting, but it's relentless. We'll see. So yeah, that's a little different. I did, you did see the proclamation to our fire chief. I just once again want to thank him for his storied career here in Bevel, for his service to us in Bevel. It was bittersweet to see him go and see how much I've aged in the last 18 years, because I was sitting up here when he first got sworn in, as we mentioned. You'll see tonight on the agenda, we have a resolution about the Green Team, something that we had constituted previously, something that has to be reconstituted strictly for the award of grants. We were awarded a grant about a year ago, and unfortunately, sometimes these grants have a lot of follow-up that has to happen, and we didn't necessarily, as a township, follow all those parameters. So we lost the grant, and we kind of got precluded from going forward with more grants. The nice part is that we made nice of the state. The state likes the fact that we're reconstituting Green Team. The same members that were on it were there, except I replaced the former mayor on that, and they actually, our grant company, recommended a nonprofit to also work with, and that nonprofit's already working with, trying to do some of the paperwork, which is nice. So that's that. I was on Friday, had the opportunity to take a tour of the SoHo, a site that we all know as the SoHo Hospital, Geriatric Hospital. We know it by a lot of names in Bevel. It will become luxury apartments. They're looking at about four to five more months. I think that's a little aggressive, if you ask me, but they're going to be, they're going to be there, and that's going to be something we're very proud of. I did post, I'm sure many of you saw, some photos of that. And I have to say, as active as I am on social media, a lot of my posts, I'm pretty clear with what our, what our reach is and what our social media engagements are. Just on average, the last six months or so, an average reach for something I put up is about 1,100 to 1,200 reaches. The average engagement is something near 300 to 400, meaning people hit the like button, or they comment, or they share it. It's interesting to note that I am absolutely shocked at the level of response that came out of that, out of that post. We hit, and still counting, 52,000 reaches and 41,000 engagements on that one post, which just shocks me. So people are interested in the building, they're interested in the history, they're interested in all that. It's something nice. It's, you know, there's competing theories on, yeah, Beautiful Mind had a play in that, and what people really want to see there. End of the day, it's going to be luxury apartments, and we're happy about that. We, I had a DOT meeting here last week. Councilman Cosarelli sat in on that meeting with me. We discussed Route 20, oh, I'm sorry, we discussed Route 7, Washington Avenue. I've said it repeatedly in all my mayor's reports, the state's going to come in and do Washington Avenue. That is their road. That is their state highway. We have very little say in what's going to happen there. That said, they're actually happy that we are engaging them. When I moved into the mayor's office, I brushed off plans that were four years old, and it was that re-engagement that actually brought them back to the table. So we've now had two or three meetings with them, this most recent one. Actually, I was happy about because they took some of our feedback and some of our opinions from the previous meeting, which they didn't have to do. They literally told us, "If we don't get a resolution of cooperation from the council, we're just going to show up one day and start digging up the road." So now that we have that engagement, we have that back and forth, they are planning in March a community meeting. That community meeting will be a presentation in a format just like this, where they'll be able to show the residents what they're proposing. Again, they're proposing street asphalt, and they're also talking about streetscapes for the sidewalk improvements, the whole length of Washington Avenue, which is nice. With that said, I always take the opportunity, when I have those kind of people in front of me, to ask for more things. So we did bring up to them, Councilman Cosarelli was there with me, and I showed video of Route 21 at nighttime, if any of you have noticed. If you're heading 21 south, as you cross over the Nutley exit into Bevel, it's pitch black. It's been pitch black for years. Every single light bulb is out. Shockingly, within 24 hours, I think, all the lights were back on. So that's good. I was happy about that. They plugged it back in. All the lights are there. The next thing that I did was also email them. I did notice in Nutley that they are cleaning up some of that Main Street property. The, you have Main Street, and you have that land between Main Street and Route 21. In Nutley, they're knocking down trees, they're cleaning it up, they're taking care of the litter. I asked point-blank why they weren't doing that in Bevel. The next day, I sent some emails with photos showing that. I'm told maintenance departments will be out to do that. It's the squeaky wheel. I keep saying it. I'm in front of them. I email them. I nudge them. I send them pictures of me standing in weeds and signs, and it actually does get done. Next up, you might have seen on News 12, and even the patches and local media are carrying it, the chief, the police chief who's in the room today, very proud to report, our crime has been way down. So I just want to applaud the chief We have seen from 17 to 18, we've seen a double-digit reduction in crime. Overall crime down 13 percent. The all-important violent crime down 24 percent. So we're seeing crime down in Bevel, and if you haven't noticed, we're seeing property values up. So that's good. We're very happy about that. It's only the beginning. I'm pretty committed to making sure that we keep those downward trends going down and those upward trends going up. We have a, from an email that came out through, I think it was my office or maybe somebody on our Green Team, but long story short, we have reached out to Rutgers University, and I'm very proud to announce that next Tuesday morning at 9:30, archaeologists from Rutgers and NYU will be onsite in Bevel to look at the Dutch Reformed Church, both the cemetery and the, what we believe are remains of the first Chinese immigrants in America buried, or not buried, in the basement of that church. So again, we all know the history of that church. We all know the current condition of that church, and whatever we can do as a governing body, as a municipality, to assist that, I think it's an historic site. I don't mean just on a historic register on Bevel or the state or the federal. I mean a true historic site in Bevel, and anything we can do to bring awareness to that, including having Rutgers here to study the remains. That is a very, very vital landmark for Bevel. Everything from the cemetery, who's buried in the cemetery, you may or may not know, but it was one time believed that Henry Rutgers was buried there, the namesake for Rutgers University. He is not. The three of his family, three, I believe, his family members are. Rutgers is very interested in that. That site was very notable during the slave trade. It was a part of the underground railroad to give state haven to slaves here in the north. It was very vital during the Revolutionary War. That site is historic, and anything we can do to bring national attention to it would be something that, obviously, I'm going to work hard toward. We did have a communication, or we will have a communication on next. One of those communications is from our freeholder, Carlos Primeros. He's actually a freeholder that represents Bevel. He sent an email to myself and the governing body last week. That's going to be on the agenda as a communication. But basically, we're proud that the county is, has awarded Bevel some transportation money to do some road improvements. So we have, they have about nine different interceptions throughout the county, and interestingly, Bevel got two. So that's great percentages right there. We're very happy that Franklin Avenue Mill Street will be redone, and Franklin Avenue Girollina Street will be redone by the county. Again, they authorized nine, Bevel got two. A year ago, the county did $9 million worth of roadwork, Bevel got nothing. So we are on the upward swing with our relationships with the county. I do thank the freeholder for that. I thank the county executive. I think everybody involved in that for that. And again, that communication will be on the agenda. Lastly, tomorrow at 11:30, we do, speaking of crosswalks, tomorrow at 11:30, we do have a dedication. I know the mayor, the council have been invited to that, as well as the public. That's going to be in between the chandelier and Wendy's. We have a new blinking light crosswalk that's going there. For those who don't know the history there, we've had two fatalities at that section there, people trying to cross the street to go to the chandelier. We thought it was time to act. I'm grateful for my council colleagues that we actually paid for that out of road money that we had allocated, and that's something that we're very proud of. And tomorrow, that dedication will take place there. We will have a family member of one of the victims of the fatalities there, and there will be a small, light lunch catered complement at the chandelier also. So that's tomorrow at 11:30. That basically concludes my mayor's report. Next up, on the agenda, we have communication.
A letter of recommendation received from the planning board of the town to Bevel regarding property located at 78102 Washington Avenue, 7577 William Street, and 74 Washington Avenue are properties that meet the criteria of designation of non-condemnation area and interim development. The request received includes both permission to include trees throughout the township of Bevel. Yes.
Make a motion. We have a motion made in second. Clerk, call a roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumalberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes.
See letter received from Essex County Freeholder Carlos Primeros stating, "County of Essex approved a resolution awarding $4,905,082 for nine intersection improvements, which two of those intersections are in the township of Bevel. The intersections to be improved on Franklin Avenue Mill Street and Franklin Avenue and Girollina Street."
We don't accept that. That's already been done, correct?
Correct.
Next up, we have a special action. This is a little bit of a deviation from our normal agenda. There's a legal reason why we need to do that. There's an ordinance on for first reading. However, in order to get to that ordinance, we have to pass a resolution first, and our agenda's traditionally regulations are afterwards. So while this special action is a resolution, I'm going to ask the council to vote on, the ordinance that it speaks to will be on first reading, and there will be a spot at the next council meeting, I suppose, for public commenting on that. So with that being said, I'd like to, need a motion to move the special action resolution?
Make a motion to move it.
Second.
We have a motion made in second. Clerk, call a roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumalberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes.
Ordinances.
Ordinance number one for introduction, and ordinance approving the financial agreement for long-term exception by and between the township of Bevel and ESHC Storage of Bevel Urban Renewal LLC.
Make a motion.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. Clerk, call a roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumalberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes.
Ordinance number two for introduction, the ordinance of the township of Bevel establishing an electric and/or natural gas aggregation program.
Make a motion. Second.
Motion made in second. Clerk, call a roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumalberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes.
Three, ordinance number three for introduction, the ordinance will men provide several ordinances in the township of Bevel, Dr. 8-16 Handicap Parking Stasis.
Motion.
Second.
Motion made in second. Clerk, call a roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumalberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes.
Ordinance number four for introduction, ordinance establishing a beautification committee to the membership salaries and compensation and powers of duties.
Make a motion.
I'm going to...
What do you want to do? Final order yield this through the town attorney for a second. Can you explain it?
No, it's just going to be amended. A portion of the ordinance, I'm going to do this on first reading. A portion of the ordinance says that the committee, I'm sorry. The portion, I don't have a, I don't have a mic down there. A portion of the committee, the portion of the ordinance that requires the committee to be appointed by the mayor, that's going to be amended to appointed by mayor with consent of council. As amended, so what your, the motion is to prove it on first reading with that amended.
So we're removing the ordinance with, as amended on first reading.
Yes.
Second.
Motion made in second. Clerk, call a roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumalberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes.
Next up, we have public commenting.
Make a motion open public.
Second.
Motion made in second. Clerk, call a roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli.
Yes.
DePena.
Yes.
Graziano.
Yes.
Nattari.
Yes.
Robel.
Yes.
Strumalberg.
Yes.
Mayor Melvin.
Yes.
Mr. Frantantoni.
Phil, it's Frantantoni, Mount Prospect Avenue. I heard in your report that you spoke to the state about Washington Avenue, about what they're doing. By any chance, did you mention the light down by ShopRite?
Yes.
And what did they say? Are they going to look into it?
They are.
Okay. And I want to know with the old, the playground that was used to be there, where they were, the shooting range.
The old restoring.
All right. Is that going to be made into a handicap playground? That was mentioned from the previous administration about doing something like that for the handicapped children in the town, that they can go to a playground and enjoy themselves. Do you look into that?
Sure.
And I want to know if you had set a date or anything, when it would be a year and you're ending, marijuana bill that was going to be passed. That's all I have.
Yeah, we did talk to the state about that. They're looking into it. There's a give-back. The township puts up a proportional percentage of what that light would cost. On our end, we're thinking about when that, right now, there's a vacant land across the motorcycle wall. When that applicant comes into the planning board, we might make that light be a condition of that planning board approval. And that would mean the developer would then pay Bevel's proportional share to the state to get that light done. The Fistol Range, I've actually had some conversations with an organization that did want to do that for a handicap. Unfortunately, that organization is no longer active. Years ago, they were very interested, and Bevel was unwilling to deal that property of them for some reason. They actually went to Bluefield and opened up a center there. So that's, it's on our list of things to do with. We did have a grant meeting recently about, with our grant company about, yeah, the challenges, yeah, about reaching out for grants to do that. That's a project that we're interested in doing. Unfortunately, it does flood there, so anything with turf would be good. We're even open to dog park, community garden, something like that. Somehow utilize that correctly. I'm tired of seeing these parks that look like swamps and are not maintained. We haven't set a date yet. Been waiting on the state, I think, to see what's going to happen with what they're doing with the marijuana. Anybody else? Mr. Frantantoni?
Yes, in the capital, the, I don't know why we're going to subsidize the storage. You and Bo will discuss that at the public hearing. In regard to Resolution 16, 78102 Washington Avenue, last year, the planning board determined that was not an area needed redevelopment, and it certainly is not. I felt sorry for the consultant, Ms. Bucci, at the planning board meeting, and I apologize because she really had a stretch to try to make a case that's an area needed redevelopment. The property was approved for development about 12 years ago, for eight units. It then was approved to come down to six units. It's an empty lot. They can't prove no Russian collusion, but certainly...
Yes.
DePena?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nattari?
Yes.
Robel?
Yes.
Strumelberg?
Yes.
Mayor Mellon?
Yes.
Next up, we have public commenting.
Phil's Frantantoni Mount Prospect Avenue. I heard in your report that you spoke to the state about Washington Avenue, about what they're doing. By any chance, did you mention the light down by ShopRite?
Yes.
And what did they say? Are they gonna look into it?
They are.
Okay. And I wanna know with the old, the playground that was used to be there, where they were the shooting range?
The old pistol range.
All right. Is that gonna be made into a handicap playground? That was mentioned from the previous administration about doing something like that for the handicapped children in the town, that they can go to a playground and enjoy themselves. Should we look into that?
Sure.
And I wanna know if you had set a date or anything, when it would be a year and you're ending, or is there a marijuana bill that was gonna be passed? That's all I have.
Yeah, we did talk to the state about that. They're looking into it. There's a give back, the township puts up a proportional percentage of what that light would cost. On our end, we're thinking about when that, right now, there's a vacant land across the motorcycle wall. When that applicant comes into the planning board, we might make that light be a condition of that planning board approval. And that would mean the developer would then pay Bellevue's proportional share to the state to get that light done. The pistol range, I've actually had some conversations with an organization that did wanna do that for a handicap. Unfortunately, that organization is no longer active. Years ago, they were very interested, and Bellevue was unwilling to deal that property with them for some reason. They actually went to Bluefield and opened up a center there. So that's, it's on our list of things to do. We did have a grant meeting recently about, with our grant company, about, yeah, about reaching out for grants to do that. That's a project that we're interested in doing. Unfortunately, it does flood there, so anything with turf would be good. We're even open to dog park, community garden, something like that, somehow utilize that correctly. I'm tired of seeing these parks that look like swamps and are not maintained. We haven't set a date yet, been waiting on the state, I think, to see what's gonna happen with what they're doing with the marijuana. Anybody else? Mr. Frantantoni?
Yes, in the capital, the, I don't know why we're going to subsidize the storage. You and Bo will discuss that at the public hearing. In regard to Resolution 16, 78-102 Washington Avenue, last year, the planning board determined that was not an area needed redevelopment, and it certainly is not. I felt sorry for the consultant, Ms. Tucci, at the planning board meeting, and I apologize because she really had a stretch to try to make a case that's an area needed redevelopment. The property was approved for development about 12 years ago, for eight units. It then was approved to come down to six units. It's an empty lot. They can't prove no Russian collusion, but it certainly appears there's some collusion in Bellevue here. Because the consultant, and I, you were there, Mr. Mayor, and you know what I said, said there's this dilapidated building with broken blinds and all this. Anybody reading that transcript would have thought that that's some kind of building, when it's actually about 120 square feet, little old office building. The site was cleaned up, and I believe they intentionally left that five-foot pile of gravel there to make it look like an eyesore, when it's not. It's not an area needed redevelopment. The reason you're doing it is so you can grant a pilot. It doesn't work. This is 10 days ago, January 10th, front page headlines, audit blast New Jersey tax breaks. Go read it. These tax breaks are killing the state. The other news article, pilots steer Atlantic County towards fiscal disaster. All the pilots, they've given down there in Atlantic County, is killing the taxpayers down there, while the millionaire developers are walking away with millions in their pockets. The boxer report, the state auditor, I won't read it, four pages of how bad tax abatements are for the cities and the state. You know, they artificially depress the property, property rates, which municipal, adjoining municipalities and the local taxpayers have to pay the cost of these subsidies to the developers. Developers seek abatements, and without repercussion, they overpromise benefits that do not materialize. The Terry Street project, together, and the thing there, he appeared, Mr. McNeil, the developer, appeared right here on January 13th, 2015, Oprah Dean transcript from his transcript. He said he was coming here to ask that his property, which he said was totally vacant, which was an out-and-out lie, because there was tons of contractors renting there, there was a cabinet guy, there was a landscaper there, a paving contractor, there was a trucking outfit that parked 26 trucks there, that in its face was a lie. It was not vacant. He then says, he was here to have his property zoned as an area needed redevelopment. This is my first step. He then says, we're dealing with a but-for. But-for some alliance with the town, such as a pilot, this project would not exist. And then goes out to blatantly say publicly, if he would build these market-rate luxury rental apartments, he would have to pay $4,000 to $4,500 in taxes, which I think is fair. But he says, if I had to pay $4,500 in taxes per unit, I would fail my financing test for the banks. The banks will not loan at that. So obviously, these are not good projects, because the bank is the ultimate arbiter of what is a good project or not. So what happens? Councils like yours, ran him a pilot, so we, the taxpayers, have to pay the taxes that this developer admittedly, publicly, right here in 2015, admitted he don't wanna pay the fair taxes. He says the fair taxes are $4,000, $4,500 per unit, which is low, because for one family house, we're paying $9,000, $10,000. So these are insane. I beseech you, especially your four councilmen, four councilmen who are running next year because of all these positive tools, we're gonna be campaigning against you next year. So...
We need you to wrap it up, Mr. Frantantoni.
All right, and just, do I have time for a little compliment?
Sure, you always have time for a compliment. You always have a buck for your compliment, so that's a problem. No buck!
But-for, I know Mr. Tucci a long time. We first met in 1988, when he was director of community development, and we put the addition out of the senior citizen building back then. And at the time, we had a good relationship. But tonight, I wanna thank you very much. I wanna thank you for the white paper you put out in regards to Bellevue.
It was nothing.
Mr. Tucci's white paper, he was really honest. And he says all the ramifications of these rental units, what they're doing to these towns. And it wasn't an opinion piece. He actually gave facts of what's happening nuttley to their police department, their fire department, their roads, the sewer division, the sanitary sewer capacity. Could it be impacted?
Where's the compliment, Mr. Frantantoni? I'll do it for myself.
This was a great paper he put out.
In Nutley?
And I'm thanking him.
In Nutley?
Yeah, but it pertains, like I said, with the magic boxer and all the other reports that have come out, this is what's happened with this over the dominance of these high-density rental units.
Thank you, Mr. Frantantoni.
The public safety, they had a 44% increase in police departments.
This is not, this is not a compliment at all, Mr. Frantantoni, so please wrap it up.
I'm complimenting, the fire department had a tremendous increase, 28.1% increases in force because of all these rental units. Municipal court, 29% increase in cases.
Thank you, Mr. Frantantoni.
You don't wanna hear it, but, again, I'm beseeching you. These pilots are killing not only Bellevue, and other towns that do it, the entire state, as documented, and these are the state auditor.
Mr. Frantantoni, time's up.
About the tax break destroying New Jersey.
Thank you.
So I'm asking you, please, forget these pilots, because we can't afford to pay for the developments they're bringing.
Thank you, Mr. Frantantoni. So, I'm not really gonna, I'm not really gonna do this. We're gonna have our opportunity to have this debate. This is something that is gonna come before this council. This isn't the first time it's gonna come before this council. I truly believe that the people in this town, as you saw at the planning board meeting, for those who were there, want development. They, they're tired of the residential taxpayers footing the bill, and unless we get new ratables in this town, not gonna happen. So for that reason, you know, Mr. Frantantoni likes to talk about how this plan was approved 12, 10, 12 years ago. Guess what? It's still vacant. If a developer could have made a nickel on it, they would have built it by now, which is a reason why it's still vacant. It's not a feasible project at market rate. There's no doubt about that. We're gonna have our chance to have that debate. Mr. Frantantoni, you will hear from, I'm sure, in the near future again, as you will hear from me in a more eloquent manner, as I make my presentations. But the misnomer is that the resident, that the taxpayers foot the bill when we issue a pilot is a fallacy, a total fallacy.
My son lives in Louisville, and he pays more taxes than that.
Out of order.
I'm for you.
I give you one more time to speak, this is my time to speak, so I thank you. Next.
It's ironic, Mr. Frantantoni, you must have read the same report I did online from the state comptroller. But like I said, I don't think any one of us are anti-development in the municipality, but I was reading up on, it just so happens, about these pilot programs myself, and I made a number of highlights, which I could save it for the hearing, but you also have a resolution here. And, famous to municipalities by business and developers in lieu of taxes known as pilot programs, distort municipal incentive in using instruction abatements at the expense of county, schools, and district. My concern is the amount of money, let's say you're collecting $100,000, let's use, for say, a million dollars. What percentage of that million dollars goes to the municipality? How much goes to the Board of Ed, and how much goes to the county? That's number one question. I was also reading an article, I don't wanna bore you to death because it was just too much to read today, Jersey City did it, and they're talking about Jersey City, they own the same thing, of how many tens of millions of dollars they have lost because of these pilot programs, and the burden is going back onto the taxpayers in way of the Board of Education being shortchanged. They're only giving them 5%, 5% of the monies. Well, I'm just telling you what I read, I'll give you the article here.
I know how pilots work, that's not true. The Board of Education does not give buybacks.
Well, then, well, the state better not, then to make their corrections here.
True.
That's up to you now to dispute them, because they're telling me something different, and you're telling me something, but I'm telling you what I'm reading and writing. So that's the difference between someone verbally telling me something when I'm reading it, well, who's right and who's wrong. I would like to know that, and I think all of us are entitled to know what is true. Here. You think for one minute a developer is losing money on rental, rentals at an all-time high. I showed a unit on Division Avenue, I can't give you the address, was $2,200, and I was like, plus utilities. People are pained, and people are pained. You know that, you have a real estate license, you were involved in it for some period of time.
I understand, they landed all national.
I mean, I don't believe it, nobody's objecting to it, but what's gonna happen? The municipality, say, say the state is correct. You collect 90%. So now, the state has to give state aid to offset what you have, so you could turn around and say, oh, guess what, we didn't raise taxes this year, or for the past five years. Yeah. And the other thing is, a 30-year abatement, you can give five years and review it, I'm at a time. Five years, I would agree with you, but not 30 years.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Michael Sheldon, 47, Flag Street. Just a few quick items tonight.
But for, I know Mr. Tucci a long time. We first met in 1988 when he was director of community development, and we put the addition out of the senior citizen building back then. And at the time, we had a good relationship. But tonight, I wanna thank you very much. I wanna thank you for the white paper you put out in regards to Bellville. If you read Mr. Tucci's white paper, he was really honest. And he says, all the ramifications of these rental units, what they're doing to these towns. And it wasn't an opinion piece. He actually gave facts of what's happening nutley to their police department, their fire department, their roads, the shore division, the sanitary shore capacity. Could it be?
Where's the compliment, Mr. Frantantonio?
This was a great paper he put out.
In Nutley?
And I'm thanking him.
In Nutley?
Yeah, but it pertains, like I said, with the magic boxer and all the other reports that come out, this is what's happened with this over the dominance of these high-density rental units.
Thank you, Mr. Frantantonio.
The public safety, they had a 44 percent increase in police departments.
This is not a compliment or a war, Mr. Frantantonio, so please wrap it up.
I'm complimenting it. The fire department had a tremendous increase, 28.1 percent increases in calls because of all these rental units. Municipal court, 29 percent increase in cases.
Thank you, Mr. Frantantonio.
You don't wanna hear it, but again, I'm beseeching you. These pilots are killing not only Bellville, not the towns that do it, the entire state, as is documented, and these are the state auditor.
Mr. Frantantonio, time is up.
About the tax break destroying New Jersey. So I'm asking you, please, forget these pilots, because we can't afford to pay for these developments they're bringing.
Thank you, Mr. Frantantonio. So, I'm not really gonna, I'm not really gonna do this. We're gonna have our opportunity to have this debate. This is something that is gonna come before this council. This isn't the first time it's gonna come before this council. I truly believe that the people in this town, as you saw at the planning board meeting, those who were there, want development. They, they're tired of the residential taxpayers footing the bill, and unless we get new ratables in this town, not gonna happen. So for that reason, you know, Mr. Frantantonio likes to talk about how this plan was approved 12, 10, 12 years ago. Guess what? It's still vacant. If a developer could have made a nickel on it, they would have built it by now, which is the reason why it's still vacant. It's not a feasible project at market rate. There's no doubt about that. We're gonna have our chance to have that debate. Mr. Frantantonio, you will hear from, I'm sure, in the near future again, as you will hear from me in a more eloquent manner as I make my presentations. But the misnomers that the resident, that the taxpayers foot the bill when we issue a pilot is a fallacy, a total fallacy.
My son lives in Louisville, and he pays more taxes than that. That's for you.
Out of order. I give you one more time to speak? This is my time to speak, so I thank you.
Next. In regards, it's ironic that Mr. Frantantonio, you must have read the same report I did online from the state comptroller. But like I said, I don't think any one of us are anti-development in the municipality, but I was reading up on, it just so happens, about the pilot programs myself, and I made a number of highlights, which I could save it for the hearing, but you also have a resolution here. And payments to municipalities by business and developers in lieu of taxes known as pilot programs distort municipal incentive and use an obstruction abatement at the expense of county, schools, and district. My concern is the amount of money, let's say you're collecting $100, let's use, for sake, a million dollars. What percentage of that million dollars goes to the municipality? How much goes to the Board of Ed, and how much goes to the county? That's number one question. I was also reading an article, I don't wanna bore you to death, but there was just too much to read today. Jersey City did it, and they're talking about Jersey City, they own the same thing, of how many tens of millions of dollars they have lost because of these pilot programs, and the burden is going back onto the taxpayers in way of the Board of Education being short-changed. They're only giving them 5 percent, 5 percent of the monies. I'm just telling you what I read, I'll give you the article here.
I know how pilots work, that's not true. The Board of Education is not getting by.
Well, then, well, the state better not, then to make their corrections here.
That's true.
That's up to you now to dispute them, because they're telling me something different, and you're telling me something, but I'm telling you what I'm reading and writing. So that's the difference between someone verbally telling me something when I'm reading it, well, who's right and who's wrong? I would like to know that, and I think all of us are entitled to know the truth here. You think for one minute a developer is losing money on rental, rentals at an all-time high. I showed a unit on Division Avenue, I can't give you the address, was $2,200, and I was like, plus utilities. People are pained, and people are pained. You know that, you have a real estate license, you were involved in it for some period of time. I mean, I don't believe it's by, nobody's objecting to it, but what's gonna happen? The municipality, say, say the state is correct. You collect 90 percent. So now, the state has to give, give state aid to offset what you have, so you have to turn around and say, oh, guess what, we didn't raise taxes this year, or for the past five years. Yeah. And the other thing is, a 30-year abatement, you can give five years and review it a matter of time. Five years, I would agree with you, but not 30 years.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Michael Sheldon, 47 Flag Street, just a few quick items tonight. Firstly, I'd like to also thank Mr. Tucci for informing me just before the start of tonight's meeting that he's finished the review of all of the receipts I gave him regarding my out-of-pocket expenses for running the website these last few years. He informed me that once the temporary budget is in place, he'll be able to move forward and compensating me with that sort of money. I appreciate, I thank you for that. I'm very grateful to see that the county's going to be investing a fair amount of money in improving two intersections. But as you mentioned earlier, we have a potential crisis looming here at another intersection, and that's the Soho Hospital Geriatric Center. When that goes online, you're gonna have 245 units, 500 or more cars needing to get access, interest, address to Bellville Avenue. As chair of the operations committee for the Board of Education this year, I've asked Dr. Tomko to try to put together a meeting with the council and with county officials to see if there's anything we can do while we have the chance to possibly widen that critical section of Bellville Avenue around School Number 10. Those are county roads, the township itself can't do anything, but there's been some discussion about putting a curb cut there for the buses, like we did with School Number 7. We're doing something to widen that area to make a few more dedicated turn lanes, because I, my fear is that when the kids return to school this September 23rd, we're delaying the school year by 18 days because of the referendum work. But once that facility is online, it's really gonna become a total bottleneck. Our buses are now in the School Number 10 parking lot. You're gonna have just too many people trying to use that little constricted bit of Bellville Avenue, and we really need to do something while we have the opportunity now in advance of what I think will be a major crisis come this September. The last thing I wanted to mention, just flipping to the very end of the agenda, I noticed that the next council meeting is scheduled for Monday, February 11th. Normally, as we all know, council meetings are on Tuesdays. We happen to have a board meeting, the Board of Education is meeting that Monday. So is this a typo, or is there some reason why the council has to move the meeting to Monday as well? So if you could come up with an answer to that. Thank you.
Town Hall was closed. Town Hall is closed on that Tuesday. Anybody else? Sir?
Good evening, sir. Vincent Ferrell, 210 Heckle Street. I believe this is my fourth time coming here, and I've spoken to you twice outside of here, considering the parking at the end of Heckle Street and the drug dealer. It's getting to the point now where they're just hopping up, getting off the light rail, dealing with drugs, getting back on. We can walk and work, we have nowhere to park, because they park there for two, three days, and don't move. Okay? And we have the people that are around the corner on Franklin, point-to-point construction over there, and the exterminator parking on our side, and they're dealing drugs in their driveway, we witnessed it. And we're right there, and it's getting out of hand, and really is. There's signs saying, permit parking for residents. As I asked before, put the permits out, I'll buy them. We have two vehicles, we'd like to come over and park safely. She's gotta park down the block, or I gotta park down the block where we lived here. They're parking the driveways that we wanted to, 210 Heckle Street, and we have dabbin' towed all the time. I mean, I don't know how many times we call the cops, and I'm, I'm sorry for bothering them, they have other things to do besides come there for somebody blocking driveways all the time.
I agree with you. My first question was gonna be to you, the first step is always to call the police department, one for drug activity, two for cars being parked, so.
Mm-hmm.
It sounds like you've done that, it sounds like they've been ticketed and towed, but you don't wanna bother the police anymore, which I understand. What is it you want us to do, though, I guess, the question?
Yes, that's what I asked before. If we, there's signs saying, permit parking for the residents.
Right.
Okay? Then we issued the permits for the people that live there.
The police department does that. We have that program.
There's permit parking there, sir.
That's our police chief, but by the way.
Come down to the break room and pick up a permit. Seriously.
Hey, Mike.
I thought I talked to you about this.
No, we didn't.
No, I never heard of it. I brought you something.
This sign is there for permitting.
I did not.
The sign is there for permit parking, saying that there's a permit parking program.
Just come in with registration, come in for a warning with your registration, and they'll give you a permit to park.
Thank you.
Thank you. We only need.
You didn't need to come here, do you? They're gonna just call, please go to here. They were not bothered, we'll come seven days a week, 24 hours a day. You guys have a lot more reporting to do. A lot more than the council, but don't blame me. I understand, sir. And it's right there, it's just getting out of hand. We're on topic. They just come down, they get a permit, so you can park. I will, thank you.
Yeah, that's why I was just trying to ask you, you know, I thought maybe you didn't call the police department yet, and I wanted directly to call them, but the fact that you have been in contact with them. There are signs there, there is an order to permit parking, and the police department does issue the permits.
Okay, personally, but Lisa.
Okay, so you spoke to.
Personally, chief.
Okay, okay. We could have saved a little bit of time, but I hope you do that tomorrow.
Thank you. You're very welcome.
Anybody else?
Jeff Mattingly, 56 Walnut. Mayor, it seems to me that we've gotten to a point with a town of 3.4 square miles, 1.1 square mile of county property, the golf course and the Bellville, you know, Branch Brook Park, is not developable. We're in, we're living 2.3 square miles. Bellville is 2.3 square miles of where we live. There's housing, apartments, and all these shops, businesses, everything combined, industrial. We have a $65 million budget, 64.1, 3, 4, 5, 7, soon to be 65 million. So it's, the fact of the matter is, Bellville, we've called for independent efficiency analysis by independent contractors to examine where Bellville's money are going. We have very large administration.
I don't need professionals to tell you that, I could tell you where it's going.
Yeah, I can, yeah, all over the place. The fact of the matter is, we need efficiency, somebody's gotta determine what the best method of a town of our size, the size of departments, what the output is, the efficiency around, as we compare it to other towns in Esses County, or certainly in our immediate area, that share demographics like we do, having, you know, 37,000 people in 2.3 square miles. Now, you're, you know, you're looking at handing out pilot programs, tax abatements with various, there's gonna be a laundry list that's gonna continue to grow, because you're touting on Facebook and mass media that growth is what Bellville needs. Well, how much growth do we need when we have 2.3 square miles and 37,000 people in it? I mean, that's pretty dense to me. I mean, we can go higher, certainly, and we are all for development. When you're talking about putting, you know, potential.
Give me an example, give me an example of what development you're for.
What am I, oh, okay, on Washington Avenue. You have a county bus line. The point is, we are landlord.
What development are you for?
Hang on, let me answer your question, please. The fact of the matter is, we don't have midtown direct, we don't have any direct into, you know, passage into New York City other than buses. So people need cars. This town, you, I can't get out, I live on Walnut, one block off of Bellville Avenue.
Still haven't heard what development you're for.
I'm for development where you have the accesses to buses that are not.
Like apartments, like?
Not, without cars. And without children too, because obviously, if we keep adding housing.
One-bedroom studio apartments, you're final?
Yeah, actually, I could deal with that on areas where you have bus access.
Like Washington Avenue.
No great need to, you know, provide three levels of underground parking, because cars are the problem, quality of life.
We do agree on that.
Yeah, so for people to potentially be able to go about their business, get their services, their food and healthcare, and ability to get to it without impacting the roads, and that's the other thing, of course, chief, with the safety, with the pedestrians. People are getting killed in New Jersey left and right now. Disregard for public safety is no longer a matter of, you know, it's now life and death here. And, you know, we have flashing lights installed at Bellville Park at the end of the garden. They can flash all day long, they'll run you right over. We need more stinging going on there like they're doing at the county, they use that one, and the golf crossing down on Bellville Avenue. They're popping people left and right. They don't care. You know, you're not, you're like, you take your life in your hands when you cross the streets. You know, now you're gonna have it at Franklin. Franklin should have been reduced a long time ago, pulled that 35 mile an hour sign out 20 years ago, and reduced before Continental, down to one lane, flashing, slow down, pedestrians, you know, shopping zone. Bellville is dangerous, and so is everywhere else in the Esses County. So the fact of the matter is, that's, that's the sort of development I'm for that doesn't impact, or potentially, when our former mayor said, he was, when you have a pilot program, 95 percent goes to the town, 5 percent goes to the county.
Right.
Well, what is the other factor of our taxes? The schools. What is normally the largest factor in the, in the budget for our taxes? The schools, right?
How many, how many children are coming out of that self-storage facility?
I'm not talking about self. Well, why are we giving a pilot to a self-storage facility? I mean, what are we gonna get out?
And you changed the question.
Well, no, you're talking, I'm talking taxes, I mean, and impact on the taxpayers. You're, you know, self-storage, getting a tax abatement? For what?
The municipality receiving 95 percent of revenue, is that actually good then?
Well, I mean, well, it's.
Explain me why it's not.
Well.
You're stealing from the schools.
How many children are going to schools coming out of self-storage facilities?
Never know.
I think I've heard enough. Mr. Mattingly, I'm gonna need you to wrap it up. People are there to live, I got it.
Point being, any housing, apartments, or condos or otherwise, can certainly impact schools, and they get nothing. Now, why would pilots not provide any?
I do need you to wrap it up, Mr. Mattingly.
Well, I wanna ask the question, why wouldn't pilots provide some school funding if it were intended, when you're looking at industrial properties being repurposed into residential? Because they weren't intended to utilize industrial polluted properties for residential. That's why. The Boxer Program, the report by the Christie administration, I appreciate it, Mayor, but the fact of the matter is, you're laying a lot of, you know, on the taxpayers and the schools, which we will pay for.
Thank you. Next. Anybody else?
We are having this on New York Avenue, just three states, several people, can you hear me?
Sorry, sorry.
All right, I'm gonna just repeat what some other people said. Regarding pilot payment in lieu of taxes, 95 percent goes to municipal taxes, 5 percent to county taxes, and zero for school taxes. Your statement that payment in lieu of taxes doesn't impact taxpayers is false. Taxpayers are actually subsidizing developers who otherwise wouldn't be granted bank financing. And if you have any questions on what good development is and what bad development is, I suggest you read the excellent paper written by Mr. Tucci.
Anybody else? You have a motion, a motion, a second motion for Corral.
Councilmember Cazarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Graziano?
Yes.
Nittori?
Yes.
Robel?